Hi, everybody.
How are you?
Hi, hello.
How was your doggies after the week they swore?
After the what?
After the trim?
Not that I know of, why?
Because our old doggie, she was, she walked like, she was sore for a few days.
Oh yeah? She was having trouble?
Yeah, she was sore for a few days.
What's up with this?
Thanks, sir. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here Monday, September 29th for our special town board meeting. Clerk, could you please read the roll call?
Councilman Meigand?
Here.
Councilwoman Snow?
Here.
Councilwoman Pitt?
Here.
Councilman McCarthy?
Here.
Supervisor Schmidt?
Please stand and follow us on our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberated, and just as for all.
All right, I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension or removal of a particular person or corporation. Could I have a second?
Second.
Favor. Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll make a motion to come out of executive session. Could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First resolution, 123, establishing a comprehensive plan committee. We do have seven commitments there. We were hoping to get to nine. We're still going to try and get to the nine. We got to get a committee going and adopted for a timeline that our grant has given us. So I am going to look to get this to nine people in the future. So unfortunately, some of the folks that we had reached out to had conflicts with work and other things that they couldn't be on this committee. And we're waiting to hear back from Steph. What was her, I'm sorry, her name again?
Gabrielle.
Gabrielle. Did she respond today? No, she hasn't. So we reached out to Gabrielle as well from the Polling Oaks District, you know, someone involved in the community to be on. So we're waiting to hear back from her. But we do have seven good people to start with, and then we will look to expand this to nine, which will be added during another resolution. But this will satisfy one of the needs today in the timelines to continue this grant. So for Resolution 123, I'll make a motion establishing the comprehensive plan committee, and that would be for George A. Pap, Jeff Arnold, Jennifer Coleman, Mark Friedman, James McCarthy, Corinne Pitt, and Rick Wilson. And then again, in the future, I would like to go to nine, but can I have a second for that?
Second.
Any other discussion from the board?
Yeah, I just, I just had a couple of questions. So can you tell, like, what was the process? Because I know we had talked about this. I know there were names, but, but just tell me how the process--
Sure. So we reached out to the whole board and asked everyone for a couple of, a couple of recommendations. And we did take into consideration everyone's, everyone's recommendations, reached out to folks. A lot of people were curious about the timeline, what was going to be required of them. A lot of people mulled it over. And then we also wanted to make sure we had representation from the planning board, the zoning board, the town board, and the, on the C A B as well. So we took people who we thought on those boards that would work well together, and we got some folks in the community.
Can I just ask who "we" is? Because I was, I put in two names, to which I see one here. And I asked month over month who was on the list so that I could do my own vetting, and today's the first time I'm seeing this list.
Right, but some, but someone's on here from one of your referrals.
But who is "we" that went over and mulled these over? Because it wasn't me.
Well, that's why I took, that's why I asked everyone to give me recommendations. Like, one of your recommendations is on here.
One is, yes, but--
Obviously--
How do I have the opportunity to vet any of these people?
Well, a lot of these folks have been vetted already because they're already on other boards with us, which is fantastic. Like Colleen specified, she wanted someone from planning and or zoning, so we made sure, we made sure we reflected her request.
So when you say "we," who is "we"? You?
Me, as a supervisor, yes, which is why I asked everyone--
So this is, this was supposed to be a board collaboration, not just putting names in.
But this is a board collaboration when someone that you recommended is on this board.
No, it's not, because I asked, I asked multiple times over months to see who other people put in so I could do my own research, and I wasn't afforded that opportunity.
So we are still looking to add two more additional. But Councilman Maigan, like I said, when we, when we, as in myself, sent an email to the whole board saying, "Make recommendations," right? That was giving you the opportunity to have someone. And as you just said yourself, one of your picks is actually on this board. We did take that person into consideration and put it here.
I haven't had the opportunity before today, and I don't know why it was kept a secret.
It wasn't kept a secret.
I didn't know about it. I didn't know about any of these other names until today.
So is there a name on here that concerns you? Because most of these, most of these folks are already involved, either in planning, zoning, C A B--
I want to know why I wasn't afforded or kept in the process. I've asked multiple times.
This is my first time for seeing this list as well, and it was just my understanding that we submitted our names, and it was falling on the supervisor to choose the committee. I believe that's the way we spoke about it in the past meetings.
The board, it's supposed to be a board collaboration.
I think what happened, Councilwoman Pitt, is there was, there was that thought, if you recall, James. And then Nancy, we got clarification that this wasn't an appointment like the sewer commission, that it's, it's a board appointment.
It is in this moment right now. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't take a vote over an email. The board, the board vote is now.
Correct.
So Councilman Maigan, just so you know, your other recommendation actually declined the invite. So you recommended two people. One is on the board, the other one, the other one, the other one declined to be on here. So you were represented. Both of your folks were reached out to.
Who interviewed all these people?
And, and like I said, we're going to be adding two additional people, and this is just to establish the timeline that needs to be met. And we can add two additional people going forward, which I hope, which I said on the record, to get this to nine people. So if everyone could recommend two additional people again.
I'd ask that we table it until I have a chance to see the resumes.
You don't have to vote on it if you don't, if you don't like to. I don't want to, I don't want to table it because I want to establish this. There's, there's, there's parameters in place per the grant. This is getting these seven people started. We're going to add two more.
I have asked for these names for a number of months, though, and haven't had the opportunity to see them.
So Mark Friedman's already on our planning board. You also know Jennifer Coleman's on our planning board. You know who she is. James McCarthy's on our board. Corinne Pitt's on the board. Rick Wilson, you interviewed for the C A B. The only two, I guess, that you maybe don't know, like you're saying, is George A. Pap and Jeff Arnold, two very involved people in the community on a daily basis, you know, business owners and--
I wish, I wish there was more collaboration.
Would you like me to set up an interview for you with George A. Pap and Jeff Arnold, the only two on the list that you've never interviewed before?
No, because I'd like to, although I know some of these people, I, I'd have to ask--
No, you know five, you know all seven of them.
I'd have to ask specific questions for this particular comprehensive board, which is fine.
So the next two--
I'm just curious why I asked for these names last month and the month before, and nobody ever gave them to me. That's all. That's what I'm frustrated with.
Five out of these seven people already hold board seats within the town. Five out of seven.
To send me the names of the people that were recommended for this board, why didn't I get them? That's what, that's all I want to know.
Because up until yesterday, I was still waiting for two more people to reply to me. We have tracked all these folks down. We have spoken to them through the times to get them available, to see who will be on this. And like I said, if you'd like for the next two seats, I'm happy to, if this board would like to have interviews with people, especially folks who already appear on town boards, then sure, I'm happy to set that up for you. But, you know, for a board that fails to respond to emails on a daily basis, I'm shocked to hear that you're asking for more interviews. So is there a second on the table for Resolution 123?
I'm always happy to interview. And I publicly asked you for these names.
All right, a roll call vote. Councilman Maigan on Resolution 123.
No.
Councilwoman Snow.
Aye.
Councilman McCarthy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Pitt.
Aye.
Supervisor Schmidt, aye. 123 carries. For the, for the remaining two people, just so you know, I will request that the board does interviews for the final two, okay? So we'll separate interviews, so two at a time. You both can find time in your schedules to interview the next two people to satisfy Councilwoman Maigan's needs.
It's not, it's just the matter that it's frustrating when I ask to see the names, and they're withheld until the last day.
They weren't withheld at all. Again, like I said--
I didn't see them. Nobody sent them to me.
Five out of these seven people are already on town boards in some capacity.
These were the names until today.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
So did I, just for the record. I'm sorry.
But again, when this process started, it was send, it's everyone send their recommendations.
I don't have a problem with it.
I have to go back to the meeting. It was send your recommendations to me, and then we were going to put together a list based, and I, and I, everybody, literally every single board member is represented on this list. Every single board member's requests are reflected on this list.
My complaint is that I asked to see the people who were recommended even before you picked the list.
Well, you could, you could have sent an email anytime and said, hey--
I asked you publicly here in a meeting.
I understand you. I'm, I'm sure. Any given time, you could have followed up on it. So Resolution 124, oh, go ahead, Councilwoman Snow.
I'm so sorry. Just, there was one more thing. Just, I, I think, going, going forward, I think what I would appreciate is, you know, when there are committees--
Mm-hmm.
Again, if, if we can, if the full board can be asked if they're interested in being on a committee.
Mm-hmm.
It's, this is just me, but, but it's really frustrating because it seems that there are the same board members on multiple committees. And it would just be, I think, respectful for me, I'm just talking about me, if we could just say, listen, we're, we are looking for two board members for this committee who is interested.
Sure.
Because right now, I'm just going to say I'm not on any committees, and it's frustrating.
Understandable. So just so you know, to myself, Corinne obviously has a planning board background. That's why I fell strongly in her because she came from the planning board to here. And then Jim, with his agriculture background and his involvement with the county ag districts and whatnot, I thought he was, you know, I tried to put myself on here. Obviously, I thought those were the two strongest board members for a committee like this. Which should be working, by the way, with the C A B, with the planning board, with the zoning board, us and the community. You know, we were trying to get folks from all over different parts of town involved so that every part of Polling was. But maybe these next two people to complete this nine, I thought it'd be very easy to get to nine, but it has proven difficult. You know, we've had folks that just unfortunately either did not want to be on a board or not, could not commit the time to it, so.
Just have one more thing really quick. What other committees are town board members on?
The, the two of you in particular, the sewer commission meeting with the C A B. I'll be honest--
Sewer commission, that's, all right, that's--
It's another. But, but I, and I think with the C A B originally, I mean, I'll just state it. I had brought it up in January. I was interested in it. I did research. Again, nobody's, the full board isn't asked, and so then--
As for what, though, on the conservation advisory board?
Well, I think to be involved in, with interviews. I had spent a lot of time going through the records, people in town hall to attest to it. I was in here quite a bit. And my, the process, Corinne, is what I'd like is just, if there's a committee, who is interested, and then let's just have a discussion. That, that's all I'm asking.
Well, me, so if everyone could give a few more recommendations, because we, again, I do want to get this to nine. I've said it from the beginning. I thought it would be easy because we did have a lot of great recommendations from everybody. There's a lot of folks who couldn't commit to it. So if everyone could come up with another name or two, get me an email. And what we'll do is I'll, I'll get the list to a, you know, to a smaller number, and then I'll put that to the board, and I'm happy to set up interviews for the final two positions for, for everybody. Okay, next resolution, 124, award of bid of heating oil and service of oil-fired heating equipment. Pretty straightforward. It just goes out annually, and we decide on them. And Resolution 124, I'll make a motion. Is there a second on the table?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilman Maigan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Snow.
Aye.
Councilman McCarthy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Pitt.
Aye.
Supervisor Schmidt, aye. Okay, Resolution 125, consideration--
So I'm going to recuse myself at this time because one of these two resolutions pertains to me, and then I'll jump back in afterwards.
Sure. So, okay, so Resolution 125, I'll make a motion. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? So I, I will just say one thing for discussion is I did reach out to, so I've never seen a, a foil appeal and a vote by the board in my eight years here. And I did reach out to a former supervisor in David Kelly and a former supervisor in Ed Hauser, and just for advice, like I've done in the past. And both of them, in all their tenures, had never seen a, a foil appeal voted on by a town board where it was denied by the clerks' office or anybody else. So I will just say that, and three of the previous four supervisors have been in charge in this town. This is the first time this has ever happened. So I will ask for a roll call vote.
Were we going to have any other discussion?
Oh, go ahead. Sure.
Again, just that I can, I can just discuss publicly. So again, for-- I-- What can be redacted, Nancy?
The information that has been deemed to violate, it'd be an unwarranted invasion of personal privacy, is medical information, personal addresses, personal social media, social security numbers, things like that.
And so names can't be redacted.
And we do have the opinion of our H R person, which we just hired, right?
Yeah.
And we have the opinion on Committee on Open Government out of Albany, who's weighed in on this as well.
I would like to just, for the record, say that I have been doing this town clerk job, foil officer, for 20 years. I don't recall ever getting a foil request for a personnel file. I felt very uncomfortable releasing it. I thought it would, both of them would constitute unwarranted invasions of privacy, and so that is why I denied them. Now, I have 15 requests for personnel files, which is unheard of. So--
Our H R person did say that this is, that personnel files is, is the highest form of foils in municipalities.
Well, not in this one, not till now.
And, and the Committee on Open Government, and I appreciate you doing, doing that, Kathy, and if you thought that was the right process.
Yes.
But the Committee on Open Government did weigh in and say that these should be released.
I understand. I didn't feel comfortable doing it. If the board feels comfortable doing it, then they can go ahead and do it.
Any discussion from the board as well? Councilwoman Snow.
I, I have to go with nay.
Councilman McCarthy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Pitt.
Aye.
Supervisor Schmidt, aye. Resolution 126 is also consideration for foil appeal. It's, it's the same exact situation we just discussed. I'll make a motion for Resolution 126. Could I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Snow.
Nay.
Councilman McCarthy.
Aye.
Councilwoman Pitt.
Aye.
Supervisor Schmidt, aye. Motion to adjourn. Could I have a second?
So I just want to say a couple things. A complaint was made against me on May 7, 2025, that placed, and placed in my personnel file. I was never told about the complaint and only found out about it after a member of the public had foiled to get complaints in my personnel file, almost four months after the complaint was lodged against me. Once I found out about the complaint, I formally asked the complaint to be subject to an external investigation back on August 28, to which the only response from our town attorney was that she received my request. That request was over a month ago. I will ask again tonight, when is this unsubstantiated complaint going to be investigated?
Well, that's on me.
I mean, I guess it's going to, I'm, if you made--
I don't think it's on you. I think it's on, I, I requested an external investigation because I don't feel like I would get a fair process through, through the, through the means that is afforded to us.
Well, I, I did bring it to everyone's attention today, and we are going to either contact a person we've used before or ask Ian, our H R consultant, for some names.
So, thank you, but--
To the H R person, would, would, would we like the H R person to handle this?
So the H R person, I found out after the fact that there was an ongoing business relationship through town business with one employee that I know of and one town board member. And I, to me, I feel like it would be a conflict, and I'd like it to be an external neutral party to conduct the investigation.
Nancy, do you need a motion from the board to, to do an investigation?
That would be a good thing.
Like I said, I requested this over a month ago, and nothing's been done.
Just a motion to approve a, a, an investigation by an external party, a third party?
That's fine. Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve a, a third-party investigation into--
Complaint against council--
Into the complaints against Councilman Maigan. Could I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, just one more thing, please. August 28, do you request that, Councilman Maigan?
I believe so.
Was that an email?
It was an email sent to Nancy, I believe.
Wait, just to Nancy or to the entire town board?
You know, I'll have to go back and look. I think it was just to Nancy, and she forwarded it to the board, as far as I know.
That's fine, just--
Did you see that email, me requesting an investigation?
I thought I did, and I, I did not, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my iPad tonight to, to look.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it would be in Nancy, it would be in our emails, so.
Okay.
I just think that if some, one of us requests something, and something's not, like, getting traction with a response, even though we, I mean, we can say, okay, over a month or two months, or I asked for this four months ago, you know, there's, outside councils are involved. And so, you know, when I, I don't think I saw this, a request for outside investigation. If I did, I may have just thought that, you know, that was taking place with outside counsel via Hogan and Rossi and back and forth. So I don't, I don't think it's in this particular circumstance with however the communications rolled out.
How many times have, how many times have, how many times have you spoken to Nancy since then, Councilman Maigan? Have you brought this up?
I wouldn't know.
More than once?
I wouldn't know. I wouldn't know the exact number. I don't, I don't want to speculate.
Since that time, as far as, and I know it's not my responsibility to make the investigation happen, okay? I was waiting until we hired an H R consultant, which I knew was, was, it was going to be imminent. And when we hired him, I ran it past him the day after you appointed him.
This is the last meeting?
Yes, which was our last meeting, and we haven't met since, so.
Okay. So it has been brought in front of our H R person, so it is?
Yes, he's, he's aware of it.
Very good.
And I feel like it may be a bit of a conflict for my own reasons that I've stated, and I hope that you'll honor an external neutral investigation.
Maybe he can make a recommendation for us.
He said he could, or we could, we could go back to the person we used before.
Before I got here, you guys did one on another employee that was totally neutral.
Mm-hmm. Sure, certainly.
I don't necessarily want anybody that is not neutral, and that's, that's the way I feel about it right now.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Aye.
Thank you.